Thank you for joining us this evening for our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Manon?
Here.
Flatt?
Here. Thank you. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you remain standing for an invocation which will be offered by Tim Bridges representing Calvary Chapel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our all.
Ms. Bray. Our loving Heavenly Father, thank you for loving us so much that you sent your only Son, Jesus, to us to bring peace on earth and new hope. We celebrate his coming and that he is Emmanuel, God with us. Help us to remember the reason for this season. Lord, thank you for this city that we call home. Thank you that you care about the affairs of Pocatello. We thank you for those who serve our city by sitting on this council. In exchange, looms before us, we pray for your help in the time of transition. May our councils' united love for Pocatello help move us forward for the benefit of all our citizens. Let wisdom, cooperation, and fairness prevail. Father God, bring the right businesses into our community that all may benefit. Bless our first responders that work so hard to ensure the safety of our community. But most of all, let us, let all that is done honor you, the giver of life, peace, hope, and salvation through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Thank you, and a Merry Christmas to you as well. Thank you. We will move to Agenda Item Number Three as a Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item.
Ms. Bray. I'd like to move the minutes from the Consent Agenda.
Okay.
Because I was not here, I'm not comfortable voting on something I didn't see happen.
Okay. All righty. So do I read that still and then just move it?
Um, yes. You can do them.
Okay. We'll do it differently. Okay. Um, okay, they can be moved to a separate agenda item. We will just jump down to B then, Treasurer's Report. Council may wish to consider the Treasurer's Report for November showing cash and investments as of November 30, 2019.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Ashley Welsh, Chief Financial Officer. I am here to present the November 30th, 2019 Treasurer's Report. You can see total cash and cash equivalents for the city were $50,838,12. And total long-term investments are $4,934,576. For total cash, cash equivalents and long-term investments of $55,772,588. For an overall decrease of $3,882,727. The second page of the report, we have highlighted some key receipts. We received franchise fees for Intermountain Gas of $26,551. This amount was down 4.76 percent from last year. We received cable franchise fees of $46,389, which was down 4.25 percent from last year. The Transit Urban Fund received federal grants for October and Period 13 of Fiscal Year 19, $99,630. And the Transit Rural Fund received state grants from September and for capital items for $208,921. The rest of the information details the net change in cash and long-term investments for the city. The next page, Page Three, shows information on the city trust funds. There were total cash, cash equivalents, and long-term investments of $4,706,231. The trust funds received cash of $228,869, had cash disbursements of $51,173 for a net change in cash of $177,697. We also had some long-term investments sold, as well as capital gains and unrealized gains or loss for a net change in overall cash and long-term investment, down $50,363. The next page shows all the funds and their respective change in cash for the month. Page Five is Discussion and Analysis for Your Review. And Page Six shows a five-year trend of cash balances. You can see that the General Fund still has $5,891,969, which is a very strong overall cash position for the General Fund. That amount does include the transfer for the Hillview Settlement. So you can see we're up, it's the second highest over the last five years, which is really good. The negative funds, we have Transit Urban Fund, which is just pending grants. The Ambulance Fund is pending payment from Vanitt County. Fleet Management Fund is just pending payments of billings. And the CDBG Fund is pending grants. That concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Ashley. We move to C, CDBG Advisory Committee Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Shannon Ainsley to continue her service as a member of the CDBG Advisory Committee. Ms. Ainsley's term will begin January 1, 2020, and will expire January 1, 2023. D, Construction Board of Appeals and Review Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Terry Swallow to continue his service as a member of the Construction Board of Appeals and Review. Mr. Swallow's term will begin December 31, 2019, and will expire December 31, 2021. E, Construction Board of Appeals and Review Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Lynn Transphrom to serve as a member of the Construction Board of Appeals and Review, replacing Michael Bright, whose term expired. Mr. Transphrom's term will begin December 31, 2019, and will expire December 31, 2021. F, Housing and Alliance Community Partners Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Kevin Bailey to serve as a member of the Housing Alliance and Community Partner Board, replacing Jared Marchand, who resigned. Mr. Bailey's term will begin December 20, 2019, and expire August 17, 2021. G, Resolution Dissolving African Sister City Subcommittee. Council may wish to consider adopting a resolution dissolving the Africa Sister City Subcommittee. The members will be joining the Sister City Foundation of Pocatello to continue facilitating the city of Pocatello's relationship with the African Sister City. H, Bid Management Agreement, Old Town Pocatello. Council may wish to approve the renewal of the management agreement with Old Town Pocatello, subject to legal department review, to administer and manage the operations of the Business Improvement District, BID. Council may wish to acknowledge that they have reviewed the employment agreement of Stephanie Pelagi with Old Town Pocatello as provided for in the management agreement. I, Idaho State Historic Preservation Official Certified Local Government Grant. Council may wish to authorize submission of the Fiscal Year 2020 Certified Local Government Grant application to the Idaho State Historic Preservation Office. This year's application is in the amount of nine mil, nine thousand, almost went to nine million dollars there, $9,000 with a match of $15,000 in the administration general support. The work program for this year includes the required local match to host the 2020 Idaho Heritage Conference, and to send at least one member of, one member each of staff to commission, to the Commission, to the NAPC Forum. Council may wish to authorize the mayor's signature on the grant contract, if awarded, and any related subcontracts or documents subject to legal department review. J, Council Decision Wallace Subdivision Short Platte. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a short platte for Wallace subdivision, which subdivides approximately .44 acres of land into three residential lots, subject to conditions. The property is located at 15, uh, 517 McKinley Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
B through J.
A through J.
B.
B through J.
B through J, okay. Thank you.
That's okay.
We have a second by Lyric.
Yes.
So we have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Lyric. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we need to approve the others just?
Yes, I will, I'll do that now. We'll move up, back up to A, Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings, September 19, 2019, and November 21, 2019, City Council Liaison Work Session Clarification Meeting, October 3, 2019, October 7, 2019, November 21, 2019, and December 5, 2019, clarification of regular council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the minutes as presented in Consent Agenda Item A.
Second.
Was that Lyric again?
Yes.
Council President, motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Lyric. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four, Communication and Proclamations. I don't see any scouts out there, and we have no proclamation, so we'll move to Agenda Item Number Five as a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On January 2nd, 5:30 Agenda Clarification Meeting. January 2nd, 6:00 PM, regular council meeting. January 9, 9:00 AM Work Session. Other events, City Offices will be closed December 25 to observe the Christmas holiday and January 1 to observe the New Year's Day holiday. Garbage and recycle pickups will be delayed by one day. Wednesday pickups will be on Thursday, et cetera. December 26 through 31st, special pickup for Christmas overflow. Bags or boxes of extra holiday wrappings will be picked up the same day as scheduled pickups. December 26 through January 8, Christmas tree collection sites. Boxes will be provided at City Hall, Rainey Park on South Arthur, at Sister City Park entrance on Pocatello Creek Road for Christmas tree disposal. Trees will be chipped and used in landscaping projects. Please be sure to remove all strings, wires, and other objects to avoid damaging the city's woodchipping equipment. The Marshall Library has shortened service hours in December. Hours are 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Regular hours will return on January 2nd. Community Recreation Center hours on December 24th, Christmas Eve, and 31, November, or New Year's Eve, will be 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Community Recreation Center will be closed December 25th for Christmas Day and January 1 for New Year's Day. January 2nd, Appreciation and Reception for Council Members Jim Johnston and Bina Manon will be held at 4:00 PM. A reminder to please keep the sidewalks clear of snow and ice. We'll move into Agenda Item Number Six is a Public Hearing, Proposed Fiscal Year 2020 Budget Amendments. This time has been set aside for council to receive public comments on proposed fiscal year 2020 budget amendments. An ordinance has been prepared for council's consideration under Agenda Item 15A. I declare the public hearing open. Ashley.
Good evening, Ashley Welsh, Chief Financial Officer. The Fiscal Year 2020 budget was adopted in August of 2019 and was developed with anticipated grants and estimated revenues. The council elects to adopt a restrictive budget and amend in detail for unplanned revenues and expenses. Tonight, the Finance Department is requesting additional budget authority for expenditures related to unforeseen revenues and expenses in the General Fund, Street Fund, Airport Fund, Sanitation Fund, Utility Billing Fund, and the Capital Improvement Fund. The additional authority is needed for professional services, supplies, software, and for various capital projects. The majority of additional authority requested is for projects budgeted for in Fiscal Year 19 that were not completed. The revenue is provided by grants, donations, and reserves. The total for all the amendments is $2,904,571. The amendment process began with the two required public notices on December 4th and December 11th in the Idaho State Journal. No action will be taken at the end of the public hearing, and then at the end of tonight's meeting, the council will consider the amended ordinance. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Questions, council? Have there been any correspondence?
No.
Have we received any correspondence?
No, sir.
Super. Thank you. Then we would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimonies uncommitted to the application? Any testimony opposed to the application?
Nikki Taysom, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho, 83201. I'm opposed for several reasons. I want to know why there is, there are so many of these projects that are coming from reserves. Does that mean that those projects went over budget and didn't have enough budgeted from, to complete the projects, and now they're being carried over? And also that, I oppose anything having to do with sanitation and street, especially road building and things with our own people doing those. Those should be contracted out to private who have the equipment and should be doing that work. And then I also questioned the, the capital contingency. Do you have any idea what that might be used for? Why you picked that specific amount? And also, that's also been used for reserves? Because there are a lot of people losing everything right now, and so I'm questioning how many of these are drawing on reserves? How much do we even have in reserves that should be in people's pockets? Thank you, Sharon. You stick to the Constitution.
Thank you. I think unless you'd like to, won't you come on up here, Ashley, then? Oh, I'm sorry, hold on. Is there any other opposed? Thank you, Ashley.
Okay, so the use of reserves is due to projects that were not completed, and so we, we didn't spend the money on them in Fiscal Year 20, or in Fiscal Year 19, so we are going to spend that in Fiscal Year 20. That's the reason. And then capital contingency, per ordinance, has to be used for capital purchases, and that money has been set aside over the last probably three years. So we can only budget for what we expect to get in property taxes for the year because we're expecting to spend all of it every year. This amount is the amount that wasn't spent last year that we do a budget amendment so that we can spend it, but the amount still has to go before council for approval on certain projects.
Super.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. With that, I declare the public hearing closed. We will move to Agenda Item Seven as a Public Hearing, Proposed CDBG Program Year 2020 Annual Action Plan. This time has been set aside for council to receive public comment on the proposed Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program Year 2020 Action Plan. The CDBG Advisory Committee recently completed its annual grant application processing, concluding with a recommendation of approval at their meeting on November 12 and 14, 2019. A 30-day comment period began November 19, 2019, and concludes December 19, 2019. Following the public hearing, council may wish to endorse or modify the advisory committee's recommendation and authorize submission, including any public comments of the Program Year 2020 Action Plan to be, to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. The council may also wish to authorize a mayor's signature on all requisite contract documents subject to legal department review with HUD and any recipients or subcontractors. I declare the public hearing open.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm Lisa Smith, CDBG Grant Administrator for the city of Pocatello. As described by the mayor, this hearing is the public comment opportunity for the action plan that has been recommended by the CDBG Advisory Committee for Pocatello's 24th year as an entitlement city. The action plan was developed assuming the same allocation as the current program year of $441,414. However, the actual amount will not be known until the federal budget is passed. The CDBG Advisory Committee has recommended a list of conditions that allows adjustments up to 25 percent, helping us to avoid a formal amendment process in the future. Advisory Committee members and the CDBG staff have reviewed all applications for funding to determine compliance with HUD regulations and the city's consolidated plan. The anticipated funding allows for the approval of all subrecipient projects, as well as funding for the city's renewal and sidewalk programs. This is a well-balanced plan addressing the highest priority needs of the community as identified in the city's five-year consolidated plan. The activities to be carried out within the action plan are quality investments into our community. These investments will not only address critical needs related to safe and healthy affordable housing, but will also help local small businesses grow, provide new workforce training opportunities, and help protect those within our community with special needs. The memo in your packet outlines the committee's recommendations and is shown, and is shown on the spending summary spreadsheet. Copies of the recommendation were provided to all applicants and have been available for review at the Marshall Public Library, Neighbor Works Pocatello, Life, Inc., the Housing Alliance and Community Partnerships here at City Hall and on the city's website. A 30-day comment period began Tuesday, November 19, and concludes today, December 19. No written comments have been received. Following tonight's hearing, the council may wish to accept or amend the committee's funding recommendation and authorize the plan's submission to HUD, as well as authorizing the mayor's signature on all contract documents subject to legal department review with HUD and any subrecipients or subcontractors. That completes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Council, any questions? Thank you. You said we didn't receive any, did we, any written correspondence in your office? Have we received any in the clerk's office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then I would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application? Any testimony opposed to the application?
Nikki Taysom, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho, 83201. From our Constitution, Article One, "No capitation or other direct tax shall be laid unless in proportion to the census or enumeration herein before a directive be taken. No money shall be drawn from the treasury but in consequence of appropriations made by law." Under the Fourth Article, it states, Section Four, "The United States shall guarantee to every state in the Union a republican form of government." That means we, the people, are the sovereignty. Article Six states, "This Constitution and laws of the United States, which shall be made in pursuance thereof," under the authority of the United States shall be the supreme law of the land. The Fifth Amendment states, "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property, including funds, without due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." These funds are public treasury funds. They are being issued as grants in the term of entitlement to private entities. That's a violation of these laws that I just read. This is socialism. We are a republic, not a democracy. And I read a recent article in the newspaper that referred to Meals on Wheels in Idaho Falls being shorted of funds to make it through the year, so they were backed up by other people giving donations. It referred in the article, because there are so many people drawing through nonprofits to meet the needs. If we had all that money back in people's pockets instead of nonprofits and other programs that should be in the private sector, there would be plenty for people to have for their own homes, their own food, their own everything. We wouldn't have to have food drives, coat drives, rent, everything that we're having to pay. I just have been listening and people paying their property taxes at the county courthouse. Some have literally said, "We won't have Christmas this year." I talked to a mom with seven children. I said, "What are your plans for the holidays? We've canceled Christmas." Others are on fixed incomes. There is no more when you're on a fixed income, and especially the elderly who've given their entire life, service, and taxes, and also small businesses who are losing their all. I share it in the name of Jesus and calling you to uphold and obey this as the supreme law of this land, and nothing or no one.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, I, Lisa, did not hear any questions in there, and so unless you have anything else you'd like to say, I'm just going to go down here to, um, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this items before you, how do you wish to proceed?
Mayor.
Councilman Bray.
I move that we accept the proposed CDBG Program Year 2020 Annual Action Plan, and that we authorize the mayor's signature on all requisite contract documents subject to legal department review with HUD and any subrecipients or subcontractors. Second.
I think Manon got you. She's just a lot quieter than you are. She was like whispering. I could hear it, I could hear it.
I was there.
But it was very quiet, so sorry, President Johnston, you're out, and she's in. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Manon. Very quiet second.
That's great.
Could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Flatt?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Eight, Short Platte Lackey's Lots Subdivision. Chet Lackey of Mega Marketing LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Servin, has submitted a short platte to subdivide 1.12 acres, more or less, into three residential lots. The subdivision is located at 2651 Grant Avenue and is to be known as Lackey's Lots.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve this request, subject to the conditions and subject to any additional legal department review. Second.
We have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Flatt?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, Final Platte, Juniper Reserve Division Three. Billy Satterfield of Juniper Land Corporation, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Servin, has submitted a final platte application requesting to subdivide 8.18 acres into 13 residential lots to be known as Juniper Reserve Division Three. The proposed subdivision is located north of Juniper Reserve Division Two and will be accessed from Shadow Pine's Way. Councilwoman Anderson.
Mayor, I move that we approve the application with the conditions noted.
Second.
You gotta get faster than that. Louder and faster if you want to get those.
I'll let it, I'll let it down.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Ten, Adaptive Two-Factor Authentication Contract, IT Department. Council may wish to consider a request from Information Technology IT staff to approve a contract with Adaptive in the amount of $13,167.59 for two-factor authentication for implementation on cities, on the city's computer system. The purchase request includes implementation and one-year maintenance. Funds are available in IT's fiscal year 2020 budget. Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this adaptive two-factor authentication contract. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston and a comment by Adamson.
Yes, Mayor, I am going to be voting against this expenditure, but I don't want anyone to misunderstand my reason for voting this way. I do not think that two-factor authentication is a bad thing, and I am in favor of cybersecurity. Currently, the city IT department has a budget of $1.23 million, and a lot of this budget is already devoted to cybersecurity, and I know that our IT department does an excellent job in making sure that our city systems are secure. So even though I recognize the merits of additional cybersecurity measures, I feel uncomfortable with the decision to move forward with this outside of our normal budget process. During our budget meetings, this was presented to us, and the council decided not to include it in the budget. And again, I'm not saying that it's And again, I'm not saying that it's a terrible idea and that it's bad, but I do acknowledge that it costs money, and this is not a one-time expense. It's going to be an ongoing expense because we'll have annual maintenance that we have to include in future budgets. So given the recent discussion in the community about taxes and criticism of government spending, I just wanted to make it clear that I'm not comfortable voting for increased spending at this time, so...
Is there anything else that IT department would like to say about this to help us vote properly on this matter?
Chris Hornson, CIO for the city, mayor of council people. Two-factor authentication, also multi-factor authentication, just keeps coming up over and over and over as one of the highest, most recommended things that we can do to continue to ensure the security of our networks and our information systems. Most of you have homes. When you lock your homes, you think they're secure, but I would bet most of you, in addition to locking your homes, now have either alarm systems or cameras or other securities in your home. You've built multiple layers to keep burglars out of your home. You're still at risk with all that in place, but you continue to add and build additional things to your homes. Now, the IT budget is about $1.2 million. Over 50% of that is personnel. So our operating budget is approximately $500,000. I signed off today on $127,000. It was for our enterprise resource planning system. Has nothing to do with cybersecurity. Cybersecurity really is a small portion of our overall budget, so we ask that we continue to find ways to improve. It's really challenging. I get calls every day from companies that want to bring additional cybersecurity in. And it's stuff I tell them is not budgeted for, is not needed, or it's for future planning. But because of all the current breaches, the current identity theft that's going on, the current stealing of log-on credentials that happen over and over, it is just strongly and highly recommended by every agency, every company, every organization out there that you implemented. All your banks have it, all your credit cards have it, most of you, any site that you have that you go to where you have to log on with using the password are now asking that you implement two-factor authentication. And we're just going with best practices with this recommendation.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, and then we've got Bray and then Johnston.
Didn't you tell us you were using your budget to pay for this? You had miscellaneous...
We have, one, we turned back almost $100,000 last year that we didn't use, but I have a contingency fund that we can cover this first year's budget with no problems. The maintenance on it, while the initial cost that we're citing is, has been proposed to you, the annual cost, I believe, is either, is between $5,000 and $8,000 a year. I can't remember the exact figure.
Mr. Mayor. Chris, one of the communities north of us, I believe it was Blackfoot, had quite an invasion.
Yes.
If they'd had this, would that have possibly...
I don't know their full story of how their breach happened. Part of the problem they had was insufficient backup, and we have a very strong backup system. Again, we'll guarantee that something will not happen. No, I can't guarantee that. Would this have prevented our recent data breach with our credit card system for utility billing? No, it most likely would not have. But again, it's just an additional lock on the door to deter and to delay the inevitable.
Thank you.
I have one comment. I just want to say that I do agree with Heidi, and I'm torn on this issue because I agree that I would much prefer that we handle this expense as well as any expense in the budgeting process. But on the other side, I see that this is an issue that is constantly changing, where, I mean, there's new threats coming out every day, so because of that, you can't always foresee that far in advance what you're going to need down the road. And so I am going to support it, but in general, I would like to see expenses handled in the budget process.
The budget system there is for a purpose.
Exactly.
But again, the reason why we have a contingency fund is so that is we have these pop-ups and these changes in these instances, we have funding to cover those kinds of things.
And I just think security is of the utmost importance, and if there's technologies we can adopt to, like you say, they're not fail-safe, but if they help us keep things more secure, then I think we need to look at them, so...
And it will not make IT popular because as we implement this, we will have a lot of kickback as people realize it will now take a little additional effort to log on. But again, security comes at a cost.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Adamson.
No.
Cheatham.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Manon.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11. Resolution Letter Affirming City's Consent to the Resettling of Refugees. Counsel may wish to adopt a resolution affirming the city's consent to the resettling of refugees in our community and authorize the mayor to sign a letter to the U.S. Department consenting to such refugee resettling.
Mr. Mayor, before we have a motion on this, I see Larry's here. I'd like a little additional background on this, if you would do that for us.
I'm Larry Gifford, 1200 Aspen Drive, and I'm president of the Bridges Idaho Refugee Support Organization here in Pocatello. The reason that we've asked the city to sign a consent letter originates with President Trump's Executive Order 13888 that he issued on September 26th. That executive order is a requirement now for federal refugee support for states and communities to have consent by the governor of the state and by localities. And the notion is that cities who do not consent then will not receive funding, support, and other federal resources. Refugees that come into Pocatello, for the most part, come in through the Federal Refugee Resettlement Center in Twin Falls, the CSI Center. And many of the refugees find their way here to Pocatello for higher education and technical education at Idaho State University. There is a small number of refugees that come directly to Pocatello. These are sponsored by individual people or churches and so on, which is, the city has a long history of that. So there is some amount of federal support then for refugees here through the school district, through programs at Idaho State University and so on. And agreeing to consent, just make sure that any support for refugees wouldn't be bought. A letter, as the mayor said, the implementation of this executive order through Department of Health and Human Services has a way to receive those letters from localities, but we're also asking the letter to go directly to Governor Little. I spoke to Bobby Joe Muleman this afternoon. She's the Intergovernment Affairs Director for the governor, and he's trying to accumulate letters from the localities so that he can write a comprehensive support letter before the deadline, which has been shifted to January 21st now until...
No.
So is that enough background?
May I ask another question?
Sure.
Larry, what kind of numbers are we talking about in terms of refugees coming into Pocatello at the present time?
Currently, we probably have maybe six to 10 families that are students or now residents here. And some of those refugees have been here for many years, some are just starting their time. But our Bridges Support Organization has helped basically all of those who, especially in the higher education, we've provided a lot of scholarship money and other family and personal support.
Sounds good. Counsel, a break.
It's not a big number. The total number into Idaho, into our, through the Twin Falls Center, in 2017, 328 refugees, about 180 families came in. The admittance was reduced by government, federal government action. 91 refugees in 2017, 121 refugees in 2019. In 2020, the total admittance number that's authorized by President Trump is down to only 20,000 refugees. That's down from a historic plateau of about 100,000. So we're expecting probably less, fewer even, refugees in 2020.
Sounds good. Councilman Bray.
The refugees, a lot of times, are these refugees professionals that are...
The majority of them have professional technical credentials. We're working with one man from the Congo who is a Congo federal public defender. He's 50 years old, and he fled because of the warfare in there, came to America with his family, all their possessions in a plastic bag, and knows no English language. He speaks Swahili and French. And now his English language skills are moving toward a professional level, and when he's about ready, we're going to try to get him into the Idaho State University Paralegal Program, maybe giving him a path back into legal profession here in America. But there's electrical engineers, healthcare professionals, a whole range of people that are highly skilled. And as you know, refugees get just absolutely thorough vetting through the process, health, mental, legal, all that. They're ready to go to become new Americans when they come here.
These aren't people that go through an informal process, they go through a very formal process.
That's correct. And many of them stay in refugee camps in other countries for many years before being invited to come to America. And of all these people, the statistic is 98% of them are successful. They've become economically self-sufficient in less than a year and socially integrating in the community.
Well, is Mona still in our community?
Yes. Mona Hearn is an example of a religious refugee from Iran who's now been here several years and is a professional. She's completed her credentials in education administration.
Larry, I apologize. Councilmember Cheatham.
Can you tell me what the Bridges Group is?
Yes, we're a group of citizens who auto-support refugees. I brought a...
Larry, you can hand them to me and I'll separate them out there. Thank you.
So we have about, we have about 60 people who participate in one way or another. The brochure that I've passed out in the center of it, the blue panel, is our mission areas and so the subcommittees that have to do with education, friendship, job, job help, immediate needs, you know, like underwear and so on.
So the financial funding for Bridges is through these 60 individuals?
Oh, and other volunteers. For example, we had a table at the Alternative Gift Market that was at the United Church of Christ on December 7th, and so we received some amount of donations, and they go right back into our, our budget priorities are listed in that brochure.
If, if this city sends this letter and federal funds are available, do you anticipate we would see a greater number of refugees?
No, I think the number will go down under the current administration policies.
So what would be the advantage of this letter?
Because there are refugees in the pipeline that will ultimately come to Pocatello either to seek employment or education, and in small ways sometimes, like, for example, could the federal government deny free and reduced lunch payments from the federal government into the school system? I don't want to see any of that resources that we can use in Pocatello be blocked. So that's the value of our consent.
It doesn't guarantee we'll see any money, but it doesn't guarantee that we will have an opportunity if we have the letter out.
There should be just no, no effective change in the way things are going on now. It's just a continuing...
One other question directed towards Larry. We see many strains on not only the city budgets, but budgets within many of the health and welfare type organizations. Do you see any of these people slipping through the cracks and into our welfare system?
No. The statistics for Idaho are very strong, the number of people who, refugees who come and start their own business, become solid employees. In the greater Twin Falls area, the business community there has organized and has raised through businesses over $200,000 to provide family support because they need refugees who, these are people who come to work every day, they work hard, they advance by learning and become, become, you know, team leaders and managers like at Chobani and car dealers and so on. The same thing's happening in our community too. You know, if you track these individuals, some who've gone through the healthcare professions are now working at Portniv Medical Center. So the success rate is really high. Like I say, it's estimated at 98%, you know, which is better than the regular population.
Who are those other 2% Larry?
What's that?
What happens to those other 2%?
Well, they, I think people in the 2% could have legal troubles or health troubles and not be able to support themselves economically, and so they would require some charity or public assistance. In our experience with the Bridges Group, we started in 2016, we've seen none of that here. The closest thing you can come to saying a refugee needs help is students at ISU or relatively young people without family support, and they need scholarship support, just like all our kids do.
Are you further screening these people then that come to Pocatello that Bridges is supporting?
Generally, we don't do that. That's done through the Refugee Center in Twin Falls. There are some individual families who've come here who have approached Bridges for help, and most of the help that families have needed is in the terms of advice, like, I want to, I've got a job now and I want to buy a house, what's a reputable real estate agent or a...
Could I give you some cards?
Yeah, so I gave Jim Johnston's business card. No, but it's really like being a mentor for, for those families.
One of my concerns with the initial letter we received was the 12/25 deadline, in fact, tomorrow being the deadline for the letter, but you're saying now that's been extended?
Right, that's been extended, and it's, and even then it's mushy because there are several federal lawsuits against this executive order. We don't know exactly how that, the court action is going to sort out, but...
What kind of legal issues?
They're saying that that, to require a local community like Pocatello to be a roadblock to refugees is not a legal thing. I mean, these are some national refugee organizations that are taking this action. It's nothing to do with what we're doing here in Pocatello. We're just aware of that as a challenge to that order.
Any other questions? Thank you, Larry.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution and letter affirming the city's consent to the resettling of refugees and authorize the mayor to sign the letter to the U.S. State Department.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Lurick and a second by, you were too slow again here, by Adams, Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Manon.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12. Piggyback bids, public works vehicles. Counsel may wish to accept recommendations of staff and award the following piggyback bids, and if they are accepted, authorize the mayor to sign necessary documents subject to legal department review. A, sanitation. Three, 2020 Peterbilt to 520 commercial front-load refuge trucks on a Sourcewell contract with Peterbilt Motors Company in the sum of $296,378.48, each totaling $889,135.44. B, sanitation. One Peterbilt Model 567 rolloff truck on Sourcewell contract with Peterbilt Motors Company in the sum of $182,853. And C, water. One Peterbilt Model 567 dump truck on Sourcewell contract with Peterbilt Motors Company in the sum of $151,697. The price reflects a water department trade-in of one 2002 Volvo dump truck, providing a total of $15,000 in trade-in value. And D, water pollution control. One 2020 850 Ramjet, 2021 Kenworth T... One 2020 850 Ramjet, 2021 Kenworth T370 jet truck on a Sourcewell contract with Federal Signal Corporation in the sum of $263,968.96. Funds for the proposed purchase have been budgeted in each department's fiscal year 2020 budget.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move approval of agenda item number 12, the piggyback bids for the public works vehicles, subject to legal department review and authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary documents.
Second.
We have a motion by Chittam and a second by President Johnston. Connie, could you... Before we vote on this, I would like Tom to explain why we're going to the front-end loaders to the public. You're talking about the three sanitation...
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tom Kirk, I'm Deputy Public Works Director, City of Pocatello. We are starting a new program with the City of Pocatello where we are purchasing, and we're going to start the program of front-loading our dumpster containers throughout town. Historically, the City of Pocatello has used what we call rear-load trucks that take dumpsters, and the trucks back up to the dumpsters, and we have an operator in the back of the truck that manhandles and rankles a container into the back of the truck. They hook it to some hydraulic systems, and it bang, bang, bangs. And then, once it comes back down, that operator on the back has to move it back into an enclosure, and then he hops in the truck and away they go. So it requires two operators. What we've noticed over the last few years is our injury rates have gone up surprisingly with these rear-load trucks. It's very difficult for the operators, especially in inclement weather, to try and manhandle these large containers. Also, the lifting capacity of these trucks is very minimal, so we have to put multiple containers on certain locations. The lifting capacity of the front-load trucks is greatly increased, so we can put one single container instead of three separate ones. And the best part also is that, moving forward, we can have one operator running this truck as opposed to two operators. The rear-loads require a driver as well as someone on the back to actually physically hook the can onto the truck. So we're really excited about it. It's a pretty good win all the way around, and we're hoping to realize those efficiencies, you know, within the next few years. And we're still going to have to have some rear-load trucks because we have dumpsters in alleys, and so we can't physically lift one of those containers up or we'll pull power lines down. But for a majority of the containers throughout the City of Pocatello, we'll be able to use those instead.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you. So we have a motion by Chittam and a second by Johnston. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Chittam?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, Letter of Intent, North Gate Upper Waterline Project. Council may wish to authorize the mayor to submit a letter of intent, subject to legal department review, to Millennial Development Group Partners and Portnife Development LLC regarding the upper waterline loop of the North Gate development areas as discussed at the December 12, 2019 work session. Mr. Mayor, I move we authorize you to sign a letter of intent on this North Gate Upper Waterline Project.
I thought that was Vina quietly doing a second.
She was asking for a second.
I'm just quiet today. So we don't have a second?
We have a second now.
I thought one of you said second.
So we have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Chittam.
First.
Councilmember Bray.
I think it's real important to say that this is an intent to work with them on this. We're not making any commitments until it's negotiated further.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for putting that into the minutes there.
The maker of the motion acknowledges that as a fact.
Okay. So we will move, so the motion by President Johnston and a second by Chittam. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Chittam?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 14, Resolution Application Agreement for Federal Aid Bridge Grant Benton Street Bridge Over the Portnife River. Council may wish to consider the following requests regarding a federal aid, federal aid bridge grant. The grant will be used for repairs to Benton Street Bridge over the Portnife River. A, adopt a resolution authorizing staff to apply for federal aid bridge grant in the amount of $451,000. Local match is 7.34% or $33,104 to be used from Fund 70. And B, authorize the mayor to sign the project application packet and execute any additional documents with the state of Idaho regarding the project, subject to legal department review. This federal aid bridge grant program can be used for replacement, rehabilitation, and preservation of bridges. The 2019 bridge inspection report from Benton Bridge over the Portnife River resulted in a reduction of its loading capacity. Councilmember Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this resolution application agreement for federal aid, but I also move that the amount be changed from 451,000 to 430,000, and that we understand that it will be adjusted down in our match based on the 7.34% calculation, and that we also authorize the mayor to sign the application, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion by Bray and a second by Lyric. The motion was to reduce the number from 451 to 430, and the same 7.34% match. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Chittam?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 15, An Ordnance, 15A, An Ordnance Approving an Amendment to Fiscal Year 2020 Appropriations Ordinance, Increasing the Total Fiscal Year Expenditures by $2,945,71 to Account for Additional Revenues Including Grant Funds Received by the City to Use Previously Unappropriated Cash Balance for Unanticipated Expenses Occurred by the City. Council, how do you wish to have the ordinance read? Councilwoman Adamson.
Mayor, I move the ordinance, Agenda Item 15A, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that the entire ordinance be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Chittam?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An Ordnance of the City of Pocatello, a Municipal Corporation of Idaho, amending ordinance number 3034, the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal period October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020, providing for an increase in expenditures in the general fund, street fund, airport fund, sanitation fund, utility billing fund, and capital improvement fund, which increases the total fiscal year expenditures by $2,904,571, providing that the revenue to pay for set increases shall be derived from grants, unexpected revenues, and previously unappropriated cash balances, providing that all other portions of the appropriation ordinance number 3034 not herein previously amended in ordinance number 3040 shall remain in full force and effect, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, should the ordinance pass.
Can I make a comment?
Just a minute, we want to comment.
I think it's real important to say that we're not spending $2,900,000 because the majority of this is simply a parking technique into another fund, and as I read that, it's $2 million plus. And I think that's a real important clarification to make because we are simply making this more legally available to us of unused funds to use as we proceed through the year.
Thank you. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Chittam?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 15B, An Ordnance Repealing Pocatello Municipal Code 15, Chapter 8, Section 50, Additional Provisions and Exceptions to the National Electric Code.
Mr. Mayor.
How do you wish it to be read?
Mr. Mayor, I move, it gives me great pleasure to say I move ordinance, Agenda Item Number 15B, repealing Municipal Code Title 15, Chapter 8, Section 50, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, but only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
That's Tosh, I think.
God, that was a tie, but I honestly think that Adamson got it, but we're going to give it to Lyric.
Okay.
Because she said, "Give it to her."
The sound made it clear.
We have a motion with great pleasure from Chittam and a second by Lyric. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Chittam?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An Ordnance of the City of Pocatello, a Municipal Corporation of Idaho, repealing Title 15, Chapter 8, Section 50, Additional Provisions and Exceptions to the National Electric Code of the Revised and Compiled Ordinances of the City of Pocatello in its entirety based upon the recommendation of the building official, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Chittam?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 16, Discussion Items. This time has been set aside. You hear discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there will be three minutes per person and a total of 15 minutes for this agenda item. We'll move to Nikki Taisom. As a reminder, you've got on here refugees, and refugees was on the agenda, and so I would remind you not to speak of, do that.
Under the second article, first section, last paragraph, it refers to the president taking an oath for his office. It applies to any public service under oath, servant under oath. Before he or she enter on the execution of his office, he shall take the following oath or affirmation. I do solemnly swear affirm that I will faithfully execute the office of President or Mayor, City Council, Chief of Police of the United States and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States. I know when city officials have taken an oath, as well as county, it is only stated you support the Constitution. That is not a full oath of your office. Every citizen of the United States is bound by this document as the supreme law of this land as it was originally established by God, along with the Declaration of Independence and our Monroe Doctrine, which forbids any compromise to our national security, our health and safety, our lands, our freedom, and our independence. I have opposed these things tonight, not being allowed my right to speak as a sovereign member of this nation to oppose the illegal actions. There's been attempts and actions of sedition and treason. I heard at a county commission meeting last week by some of the staff after the meeting that Millennial Development is dissolving. They also approved four hours of public pay as a gift to every county employee as a gift for Christmas. We have donations through nonprofits, grant programs, including with the city, breaking this nation and this city and this county and state. It's a disgrace. I make maybe, maybe $40 a week. Most people can't afford to pay for the work I do. I do a lot of trade. Almost every single time, I go to the grocery store. Five to 10, sometime all of my money goes to either like a single mom or a homeless person or an elderly veteran who can't afford even buy a cheap white loaf of bread. I don't mind doing that, but it makes me sick to my stomach to know that these things are being done in violation of God's law and our constitution, that people are now having to cancel for Christmas, while our best forces are being slaughtered and set up in a fake war while we're disarmed and these kinds of things take place against the very enemies they're fighting against. We're allowing them...
Thank you very much.
It's treason.
We'll move to, thank you.
Putting refugees...
Thank you very much. We'll move to Mike Seibert.
Mike Seibert, 1665 Pocatello Brick Road. In over the past month or so, and I've been kind of paying attention to the council, you've been discussing some items, and I was familiar with some of our ordinances, and all I want to do is just pass a copy of the ordinance out to you to familiar yourself with it, put it in the back of your head for future considerations.
That's all you got for us?
That's all I got.
Well, hand it out then.
We got all of them.
Thank you very much. We will go, there's four going that way. Our attorney can even see what the ordinance is saying.
He's supposed to have it memorized.
He does have it memorized, that's why the mayor's going to take it back from him. Thank you. Thank you for attending tonight. We would remind you that it is getting cold out there, so if you have some neighbors and things that need some help, please don't hesitate to help them and reach out to them. We would appreciate that. With that, we are adjourned.